Recording in progress.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Tuesday, September 16th, meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion to second? Mr. Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye. Next, bills passed by the county council. We received three ordinances, all dealing with budgetary matters. They were all passed nine zero. I would suggest we have a motion to approve all three.
Motion to approve ordinance fifty-two twenty-five, fifty-three twenty-five, and fifty-four twenty-five.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye. Next item, approval of the St. Joseph County holiday schedule. Gentlemen, you've all seen that. It has fifteen holidays on it next year. A slight change because it is election year, so that was factored in, unlike this year. If there are no questions, do we have a motion to approve the holiday schedule for 2026?
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion to second? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, appointment to the Northwest Indiana Professional Sports Development Commission. Folks, everybody may remember a few weeks ago, a little over, maybe it was a couple months ago, we had the opportunity to appoint somebody, one of us, to the Northwest Indiana Professional Sports Development Commission. Tony took that on, but subsequently feels that his efforts are better directed elsewhere, and it's my understanding that Raphael, you are willing to take that on.
Very much.
If so, I'll make a motion for a change. I make a motion that we appoint Raphael Morton to the Northwest Indiana Professional Sports Development Commission.
Second, third, or no?
Second.
Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
You know, kidding aside, really, when you're reading the papers about all that's going on in Illinois and the fact that this is somewhat related, that is going to be an interesting one. I don't, we haven't gotten involved in so many things. I appreciate your willingness to do it at first, but willingness, your willingness to take it over, Raphael.
Looking forward to it.
Next, going onto IPG, first approval of bid award for the Highway Garage Vehicle Storage Building.
Sky Matters Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. Last week, we received bids for the construction of the vehicle storage building out at the Alexander Satellite Garage. This will be the last piece of that, that project. Phase one was completed last year, and, well, some this year, but bulk of it's completed last year, and once this is completed, that'll give us full service there for that satellite garage. We received, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten bids, and we had our consultant DLZ take those and review the bids and give a recommendation, and we have reviewed their recommendation, and we recommend awarding the project to the low bidder of TRG Services for the base bid and alternate two, which amounts to $3,736,729.11. And what alternate two is, is it's the construction of an additional vehicle prep area with space for, for a couple of vehicles, in case, for instance, we need to put some in a different, in this area to work on, or those types of things. So, we request your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Sky added this compared to the engineer's estimate that we...
This was below the engineer's estimate.
I thought so. I just didn't remember.
Yeah, the bids came in really good, and it's always great to see as many bidders as we did.
Yeah.
Great to see what, Sky?
As many bidders as we had submit on this.
I didn't hear you. Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm glad this, it's been a while. Glad we're moving ahead and getting it finished. Gentlemen, do we have a motion approving the Highway Garage Vehicle Storage Building to TRG Services?
Motion to approve.
Second. You have a motion to second? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye. Next, approval of professional services for appraisal of the address of sixteen eight twelve Edinburgh Lane with Steve Santi.
This item and the next item, I can explain together. We have a property that, a house on a property, where the house was built in the late sixties, and the subdivision was before a time when urban drains were, were required to subdivisions. And this house was constructed in an area that would have made a great detention basin, and that's sort of what it has become. So, we get a lot of runoff from the right-of-way going into the, onto this property and causing some flooding. So, we've looked at possible alternative to remediate the problem, and there's really no cost-effective way to do that, but we wanted to get a couple appraisals so that we could figure out how much we could possibly offer for the property itself, and, and with that, we could look at the cost of purchasing versus the solution that we've had to fix the issue and make a decision. These are, this, this item and the next are for appraisal, so that we can get the two appraisals and look at the average of those two. So, happy to answer any questions and request your approval.
Sky, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm understanding what you just said. So, you're saying because there's really not any cost-effective way to, like you said, remediate the problem, so you're suggesting that we purchased the property and that they would move?
I'm, I'm...
We would relocate them?
Yes, I'm suggesting that we look at the cost to do all that versus the cost that it would take to fix the problem, and it's, to fix the problem's not cost-effective for what we would be doing.
Okay. I guess, did I miss this in our prior conversations?
No, that's, I thought that's how I explained it.
Oh, okay. Obviously, I missed that.
I'm sorry. If I didn't, wasn't clear. Yeah. Yes, sir.
The property owner is accepting that possible conclusion?
Yes, they're, that, I've talked to them...
Right.
Yes, sir. I've talked to them about this, and, and they're open. They're, they're just really wanting to, the, either the issue solved or to get out, away from it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
When you, when you brought this to our attention, you said it was several years ago. How long ago was this? Do you have any recollection of when the home was built?
The home was built, I believe, in nineteen sixty-eight or sixty-nine, and there's no doubt in my mind that it's been flooding since then. This isn't a new issue, because it, just of where it's at and where the wa, all the water comes, so. But the new homeowner was the person that brought it to our attention a couple of years ago.
And we feel we have some responsibility, because most of the water does come off of our roads there. It shouldn't have been built there, like you said, shouldn't have been built there in the first place.
Yes, sir. The water does come off of, most of the water comes off of our right-of-way into that area. So, dealing with that water is, is a responsibility that, that we, we have in this instance.
Are there other situations similar to this?
There are, there is a...
To the level of, you know, the severity?
Not to the severity of this instance.
Okay.
But, you know, that we, we have quite a few flooding issues. A lot of the flooding that we have is more, it's not as focused into one lot. It's more like neighborhood issues and those types of things.
So, you're not going to come back and suggest the whole neighborhood moved?
No, sir.
I'm kidding.
No one else has called me yet, so...
Okay, I'm kidding. No, I commend you on, on just being, you know, responsive to this situation.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We do need to get two appraisals, so we'll, do we have a motion for the first one, which is to have Steve Santi, Appraisal Services, Inc., do the, do one of the appraisals?
Second.
You have a motion to second? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And next, the same issue, professional services proposal, this one with Iverson Grove. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
If I may, Commissioner Morton, you are correct, because I, I don't think in our previous discussion, we had mentioned relocation.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I was like, man, am I losing it? Thank you, Sky.
Maybe I'm losing it, because I thought we'd...
Right. I'm like, wait a minute. This is news to me. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just want to talk to it. Okay. That excitement over, we will move on to approval of amendment number one to the Lockmueller Group contract for drinking water protection plan.
What you have before you here is, is, is a, is a no change, change amendment. Previously, we had contracted with the Lockmueller Group to perform a drinking water protection plan, and what that involved is taking, the first thing that it involved was taking all the information that we could find on the drinking water and septic and those types of things within, within the county, and getting that all in one spot, summarizing a lot of that, because there'd been a lot of, there'd been several studies done, but none of them were really collected and put together. This involved mapping, what we had is all the septic systems and also all the, all the water wells, and then looking at the impact that, that may, that would have on the, on the drinking water in the area. And then after that, looking at, in a broad view, some of the ways that, that we could possibly tackle that issue in areas where there might, might have been issues. And what this amendment does is it moves money from other tasks to the task of, of, of taking the, that broad approach, broad look in, on some of those areas, and narrowing that down to get into more detail, to come up with a, with a better defined cost than what we had originally scoped out. And this is, as I mentioned, it's, it's no change. It's just moving tasks around so that we can do that. We've reviewed this and recommend your approval. Happy to answer any questions.
I had the opportunity to see a draft of the report, and it is very extensive.
Yes.
And I think they did a good job thus far.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Matters regarding this? If not, do we have a motion to approve amendment number one to the drinking water protection plan?
Motion to approve.
Second. You have a motion to second? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on, approval of the preliminary services agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering for engineering services for various public works tasks.
This is a, an agreement. It says as needed. It could also say on call. We have this type of agreement with a lot of the consultants in our area, and what this does is it, it allows us to, to use them and work where we may need things done quickly, smaller projects and those types of things, emergency-type situations. It's a mechanism that we have where it's been approved, and we can move forward the project. What is required is the consultant will provide me with a task order and a cost, and we'll make sure that that scope is what we're wanting, and the cost is, is, is aligned with that scope, and then it will go towards the not-to-exceed amount of that contract. And this as-needed agreement for preliminary services with Christopher Burke Engineering, and it's for not-to-exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Now, that hundred thousand dollars has not been allocated for anything specific. It's not guaranteed that they will get that hundred thousand. It's, it's as needed. We use it. So, happy to answer any questions.
Most commonly, we've had culvert failures or small structure failures that we couldn't wait to get professional services to assist us.
Yes, sir.
Those are the type of things that we've used this for in the past. And, Sky, we've already budgeted for this with the council in the past, and we're budgeting for it in the future.
Yeah, it's, it's available in several different funds, depending on what the, the project is that I need them to do.
Gentlemen, questions, comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the preliminary engineering services agreement as needed with Christopher Burke Engineering?
Motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is approval of the preliminary services agreement with Lockmueller Group for replacement of Bridge One Forty-Five, South Main over Bowman Creek.
This is the last one. I'll try not to swamp the agenda again in the future.
Yeah, right, Sky.
What we have here is, is one of the bridges that came back in our inspection, our inspections that are required every two years, is this bridge on South Main over Bowman Creek. It is within the city limits, but as you, as you may know, the county is responsible for all structures twenty-foot and above, whether they're in the city limits or not. They, they were on our inventory. That has changed a little bit, but this was already on our inventory, and it's in need of, of replacement, and, you know, with Main Street being a pretty, pretty important road going out of town or into town, it's, it's, put it on the list. And we ended up getting federal funding for this. We applied for federal aid, and we ended up getting eighty percent, which amounts to about two million dollars from the, the federal government to replace this structure. That's for construction. We are handling the preliminary engineering with local funds, and that's what this, this is, request is for, is for a proposal to, for Lockmueller Group to perform the professional engineering for this. It's available, the funding is available through the, the cumulative bridge fund, and is, the PE includes mainly the engineering, putting together the contract documents and so forth. This project is, is out there a ways. It's scheduled for 2029, but that's just the end dot process and when they have it scheduled for. So, I would recommend your approval, and happy to answer any questions.
Well, as you correctly noted, is our responsibility.
Yes.
I don't see how we can't move ahead, but that's my thought. Gentlemen, any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the preliminary services agreement with Lockmueller Group for the bridge on South Main over Bowman Creek?
Motion to approve. Second.
You have a motion to second? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you.
Mr. Matters?
Yes, sir.
Before you go, sir, just for the record, I'd like to publicly thank you and Andy for your persistence in solving what I feel is a very important safety issue with the bridge out by...
The Darden Road.
Darden Road, yes. I know it was, took a little while, but if you guys weren't persistent with the company that was contracted for fixing the problem, your persistence, in my mind, is why it got done, when it did. And I talked to the constituent who originally, who originally approached me, and you would have thought that we gave her a million dollars. I mean, I'm serious.
Good.
Because she was very concerned about the kids out there and, you know, just overall public safety.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. It's our pleasure. Thank you.
Next, approval of the consent agenda. Consists of a 2025 neighborhood block party in the Carriage Hills subdivision. Funny, I happen to live in that subdivision. Do we have a motion to approve the infrastructure planning and growth consent agenda?
Sorry, motion to approve.
Second. Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to our sheriff. Item A is approval of the healthcare service contract with quality correctional care for the St. Joseph County Jail inmate healthcare services.
Good evening. Steve Noonan, executive officer for the St. Joe County Police Department. Before you were, were asking to switch the care provider for the medical inside the jail. For the last few years, we've had well path. They've had some issues, and we've not been very satisfied with their services providing. They've not always staffed to the levels that they were contractually obligated to do. So, as we look through this, we found quality correctional care out of Carmel, Indiana. Currently, they service seventy-one out of the ninety-two counties jail medical. So, we, Mr. Garrett has reviewed the contract and just asked for your approval. We did withdraw the dental portion of it. We are going to probably, hopefully stay with our same dentist. It eliminates some travel costs that would have been in the QCC contract, and I think we're going to bring that before you next week.
Well, we appreciate the efforts on your part half, and of course, the sheriff looking at alternatives. Glad that you brought this to us. Any questions about the contract with quality correctional care?
I'd just make a comment that myself and Mr. Garrett met with the sheriff and, and the staff over there, and this is something that definitely needs to happen now. The company that's handling, or that was handling, it was so short-staffed, we were getting about a quarter of the hours that they were supposed to perform. So, I appreciate all the effort you guys put in to find us somebody.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. You have a motion to second? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And just for the record, do we have a motion to table the item B approval with the MOU?
Motion to table item B at the request of the sheriff's department.
Oh, I could, I could second.
No, no, I just have, I don't know if we should table or just withdraw it, because it's a different company that they're going to use? Or just table it?
I mean, table's fine.
Let's table it.
If it doesn't come back, it doesn't come back.
Yeah.
Whatever the sheriff comes back with.
Right.
So then we can untable it?
You like untable it now. Come on, buddy. So, do we have, we have a motion to table?
Second. You have a second? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, from our JJC, approval of the memorandum of understanding with the reins of life for program provided to JJC clients.
Hello. My name is Tamika Alexander. I am the director of community corrections at the JJC through the St. Joseph Probate Court located at 1,000 South Michigan Street. I'm here to request the approval for the memorandum of understanding between the Juvenile Justice Center and Reins of Life. The cost of this program will come out of Fund 1112. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, could you expound on the, the whole program that you guys have with Reins of Life?
So, Reins of Life, and I'm going to be reading from them, so, because they want, so to represent them well. So, part of their vision, they support people with mental health issues, with physical issues, emotional issues for social growth. So, they're offering to partner with us for programming for our day-reporting youth, our day-reporting boys, our high-risk and moderate-risk offenders. So, they're offering programming to help with social skills, emotional skills, life skills. It's programming. So, they have a facility on, they have acreages with horses.
I know, I know where they are.
Oh, yeah.
No, I know about the program.
So, they're, they're offering specific programming for our youth to hone in and to help with development of their skills.
That's outstanding.
Yeah. So, we have not, we're trying to partner with them and collaborate and keep relationships going with Reins of Life.
Okay, okay. They, they have an outstanding operation and have, had for years, and to have a partnership with a program like that for at-risk youth?
Yes.
In my mind, is great.
Yes.
Thank you.
At the risk of showing my age, Lloyd and Nancy Taylor were two of the, he was a former state rep, and they were some of the founders of Reins of Life, and I agree with what Commissioner Morton said. That's been an outstanding program. If people haven't, I would urge them to attend the Reins of Life fundraiser that they have every year, which is an outstanding event. Anybody want to add anything else? If not, do we have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Reins of Life?
Motion to approve.
Second. You have a motion to second? Commissioner Morton?
Aye.
Commissioner Hazen?
Aye.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to EMA, an update on the early outdoor warning siren.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Al Kursitz, Director of St. Joe County EMA, and thank you for giving us the time to give you an update on our siren project. Also in the audience is my deputy director, Jim Lopez. Our offices are at 125 South Lafayette Street. Across the street, where the doors are always open, you're always welcome. Quick recap of what's going on. New antennas have been installed on the Jackson Road ATC Tower. That's a Power One. Phil helped us with that contract there. The PSAP 911 Center, the county city building, and the EMA office. All the old components at the Jackson Road site now have been removed, and a new rack and new digi repeater, which is extremely important to the process, that were outside in a weatherproof metal box, has been removed, and we've got them put inside a better communication building that's at that site. We might want to consider, and we're looking at possibly putting in battery backups for that. There is a generator, belongs to ATC Tower Corporation, to provide power to that tower in case there's a power failure. But Westshore Services, as a minimal cost, thinks battery backups with a trickle charger would keep that going in the event there was a failure of the generator, and we're, we think that's a pretty good idea, that. When PSAP, today, they are at PSAP, working on the digi repeater on their tower there and the associated hardware with it. When PSAP is completed, they're coming to our office. We hope that's going to be tomorrow, and they're going to put, get the digi repeater going on our office, on the roof of it over there. We're hoping that'll be done by tomorrow afternoon. Starting Friday or Monday morning, they're going to be on the roof of the building here, putting in a digi repeater antenna there, and that's going to allow these sirens to all talk to each other, and the signal to multiply, to activate them. As we speak, the west of the, rest of the Westshore Services crew has been out. We call it the barn, but the Riverside Garage, where we have all the components stored, building out all the boxes that hold the new radios, the Kenwood radios, four hundred fifty-three megahertz, and, and the batteries there that'll be replaced on all these sirens. They plan on, working on these tower sites beginning Monday or Tuesday, or as soon as the county city repeater, digi repeater is done. And so, we're talking about getting to the poles finally and, and working on that. Last, last Tuesday and Wednesday, Westshore's reprogrammed the main control point at dispatch and... and did some work in our office and it's working a lot better than it did before. This is the old system. With the new system, we'll be, receive a better message on the monitor and computer hardware that is not working and that's that area we've shown you when you've come to our office. We'll be able to instantaneously tell which sirens are not working, possibly correct them, geo cache them and go from there and we'll have a better control on what's working and what isn't. And we'll be able to troubleshoot it, not only with us, but with Westshore Services. We have a, we'll have a complete one-year service warranty when this system is down, completed, starting with the approval of, of the final contract. We're working to finalize two of the five sites, the new sites. Attorney Phil Garrett has worked with us on that, I can share those locations on that. Those are going to be concrete poles and, and sites with power to them. We also have been working with the Economic Development Department Director Shalio for three new sirens out in the Amazon GM project and today, those were approved and so we're going to get three new sirens out in that area. We, we feel that's really important, it's been really robust. We're part, we, we applied to be Governor Braun after the Swiftwater incidents down in Florida and stuff and the failure of some sirens down there. Governor Braun has reemphasized the use of outdoor sirens and we applied to get on that task force. We haven't heard yet if we are, but we're going to have a very robust network when we're done. Couple weeks ago, there's on TV about Cleveland Township about their sirens not going off. And what this was, years ago, a former director and my deputy was able to track it down by getting ahold of all the directors and a verbal agreement allowed Cleveland Township to use our radio frequency to set their sirens off. So, basically what it was, they were piggybacking, wasn't really hurting our system, but when our sirens went off, theirs would go. The reason this occurred, in a lot of counties around the state of Indiana, these siren networks have been built out individually, maybe a little township, a little volunteer department, maybe a town, maybe a city. Elkhart is kind of fragmented like that. That was Cleveland Township, they were a volunteer fire department, three sirens, no paid volunteers, nobody there 24/7. So, they wanted the ability to have that siren go off when they needed it. Now, they're trying to look to maybe incorporate theirs altogether. So, I talked, we had had a meeting in our office with the Cleveland Township Fire Department, they're the ones who have control of that. We talked with them today, the agreement is they are going to get their own frequency. They know they can't transmit on that 453.250 frequency because that's a violation of federal FCC law, but they're going to get off on their own network and in fact, they're looking at hiring Westshore Services to probably make their system more robust. We have 15 priority sites that we've kept track of, for some reason, we may feel those are the ones we had problems with or some of the battery boxes are starting to basically disintegrate. And so, we have that list here too, if you need it, the 15 sites that are, the construction crews are going to start on immediately. And then the five new sites that we have in the general areas are State Road 23, out by the Bitmat Plant, out that way, 2600 Madison Road, that's down south in the Lakeville area, Quinn Road, which is also off in that, uh, Lakeville area and Dragoon Trail East to cover Penn Township, south in some areas we didn't have. And then out in, just north of Peach and Kern Road and that covers some neighborhoods, but most importantly, it'll give protection to Camp Mill House, which was not covered by an outdoor warning siren system. And sometimes maybe we forget about that place, but during the summer, they have 100 people a day there and a lot of challenged adults.
Every Sunday.
And we've been out there, work with them, prep them, they do a great job, they, they really do. They've got shelters, techniques to deal with their challenged crowd and we just felt that's another good place. And then we have the three locations up in the GM, Amazon place and that kind of came from Director Shalio and of course, working with DLZ, they've been fantastic. Michael Crisman, our part, Project Manager on locating these in the right areas, so. So, we're in good shape, we're building out. I wish I could say it was done, I wish I could have said it was done a year ago, but we've learned a lot about sirens and it's going to be good. We also got that grant for 42 or $50,000 for those 42, I'll call them weather alert radios on steroids that are tied into that same frequency that we're going to get out to at-risk populations, factories with large people, school corporations and that, to put in their kind of command office. So, any questions?
Mr. Kursitz, that's pretty creative, what'd you say? Radio alerts on steroids?
What's that?
Didn't you just say something about?
Radios on steroids.
Radio, radio alerts on steroids?
Steroids, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's pretty good.
But, but they're very high-tech, they're well over $1,000 apiece and they come with their own associated software, a lot of unique things you can do with them, like a big factory could tie them into their PA system and stuff like that. But, we're talking about more instantaneous messaging on a weather alert or another significant hazard alert.
Okay.
It's really a good program that you can tie in with the outline schools too.
Yeah. Exactly.
Awesome.
Yeah, one, one school I've always worried about, Madison Township, way down south, yeah. And we're going to make sure they get one too.
You and Jim have been working hard on a lot of different things.
Yeah, we.
And you'd be commended for your efforts.
Yes, big time.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you.
Especially, and people should know, you kind of alluded to it, but just so the public knows, really the delay in the sirens had much more to do with the FCC.
Yeah.
That was not us, Westshore, that wasn't local, that was a.
And, and a little bit of getting some of the electronic equipment and we had to shift from.
Supply chain.
Yeah, and on that. I also like to say on the bid process, if you remember, Westshore Services was the lowest bidder by far. I mean, there was, there were 500,000 below one, 450, 300, they were, and really, if you know what they do all around the country and the world, this is what they do, these outdoor warning sirens, they know this system well. And I think it might have been challenging for a company that might have just been an electric company that thought they could get into this. There's a lot of moving parts with all these frequencies and FCC regulations and other stuff, so.
I also want to thank you for keeping us updated.
Yep.
Even when things don't go right.
Yes, yeah.
This past month, the sirens didn't go off.
There we go, now we're talking, yeah.
During our test, can you bring us up to date?
Please.
Yeah, we're not, Jim, you want to, we're, we're not 100% sure they all didn't go off. We didn't get that many calls on, we had so, a few spotters here and there and a few said they heard and that. So, we weren't getting acknowledgement in our office, but our equipment was hanging by a thread. So, yes, I know I sent you that email and I was really concerned about that, but then Westshore came and when they got into the ATC Tower location and they got it up and running, but they knew it was in bad shape, that repeater there, so they immediately started to work on it and bring it up, so. I was very concerned, but.
I just wanted to echo Commissioner Backsmyer's comments, when I received your email, I believe I emailed you guys back.
Mm-hmm.
Just to say, the detailed information that you shared with us is greatly appreciated.
We appreciate it.
And on another note, now, didn't you say that you have an application with Governor Braun, that you haven't heard anything?
Yeah, we haven't heard anything back on that, we applied to this task force.
Okay.
For notifications, because we feel we're in the process of building our system, we have one of the most robust in the state, you know?
Okay.
And I think it's going to be an example for the rest of the state.
Only reason I bring it up is I wish you would have told me earlier, because he was at WSPT today interviewing.
Yes, I saw that.
With Bob Montgomery, so I would have asked him what the heck the holdup is.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, they know where we're at and they'll call us if they need us.
Governor's contact for this area was here a week or so ago, if you can get us some of the details that I can, we can speak more intelligently with her.
Okay.
We'll do what we can to put a.
Very good.
Plug in for.
We appreciate that.
Getting it going.
And when this thing is pretty much all done or gets to it, we want to get all the meteorologists from the three major stations involved in a meeting, because they, they're going to be using this, they get the same information from the National Weather Service that these sirens are tied into and stuff, so.
Awesome.
There are going to be quicker notifications coming out.
Awesome.
We're excited about that.
Awesome.
And we've reached out to a few already and they.
Be glad to give Carrie Pujol a hands up on that.
She has emailed us several times.
Awesome, awesome.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for the update.
Okay, thank you, we'll keep you abreast of everything.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments before we move to public comment? Does anybody in the audience wish to offer a comment? Since I know everybody here, I didn't think so. Anybody online wish to offer a comment? I see we lost quite a few people. If not, Commissioners, do we have a motion to recess?
Motion to untable, I mean recess.
You just wanted to say that.
Exactly.
Second. The motion is second. Commissioner Morton?
Hi.
Commissioner Hazen?
Hi.
Commissioner Backsmyer?
Aye.
We are recessed.
Recording stopped.